Being here today. Uh, let's see, who do we have that's like Brett, who hasn't done our study sessions before that hasn't led?
That'd be me.
Me.
Mitch.
Me.
Uh, we've got a handful. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through some of this intro stuff pretty quickly. So if you guys who are new, um, have questions, stop and ask. Uh, not, not a lot of changes from the past couple of years. Uh, the main thing, there's been a couple of security updates with, um, with Zoom and with, um, with Perdeck that could cause some problems. So I've got some directions on here for how to, how to get around those if you run into them. I think I'll be able to log in the day of the events and, and keep you from ever seeing the issues. But I want you to know an escape plan just in case. Um, but before we roll on that, I want to go to the very back of this slide deck and I'll share this with you guys here in a minute. But on the very back slide of this slide deck, there are links to all the folders for the study session material. So all five study sessions, anything related to them, you can, can get through from here. Um, and I will, again, I'll share this with you in a minute. But this has not only the presentations, like the, the Google slide decks, out, air decks, notes. It also has directions for getting paid with Chrome River. Um, it's got the calendar of like who's teaching on which day and which time. Um, the Zoom links, the password to get into the Zoom account. All of those things can be found in this folder. You'll see me going into these folders a little bit here in a minute. But each, each subject has a different folders. You can see if you need to get in and access anything. This is the easiest way to do it. Um, but I will send you about a week before the session, I'll send you a reminder and it'll have all the links that you need for that session. And then the day before I'll resend that reminder. Um, so you'll get, you'll get lots of reminders from me with everything you need in it. Uh, let me go back to the front here for a minute. So just some basic stuff to begin with. Nothing new on this slide at all. Um, the sessions last an hour and 15 minutes. Um, pays 150 per, per session. Both of you, uh, there'll be two people in each study session. Um, both of you will log in with the same Zoom account. Uh, you both should have the host capabilities. And I'll show you how to get the Zoom login here in just a second. Um, you guys had to register to get into this Zoom meeting. You'll have to do that on the day of your session as well. It'll work exactly the same way it did today. Um, and the students are doing the same thing. So if you get any questions about registration, you just did it. It's gonna look pretty much exactly like what you just did, except the students will be asked for their school name and their school email address. Uh, one thing when you are registering, it's gonna ask you for an email address. Make sure you use your own email address. You're, you're gonna have an email address associated with the Zoom account to log in. Don't use that one when you're registering because the host of a Zoom meeting can't register their own meeting. So that would cause you headaches if you try to use our email address to register for a meeting, you're already the, the host. Alright, um, so just a couple of quick things. Again, I'll show you the login information here in, in just a second. We've got somebody designated as the primary presenter and, and someone else designated as the secondary presenter for each meeting. Um, and each of those people have different duties. We'll break those duties out here in a second. Um, but again, you're both gonna log in to Zoom with the same credentials. Um, and again, I'll show you how to do that in a second. I've already set all these security settings. You don't need to do anything with these. I just wanted you to know that they're there. So we do have the waiting room enabled. And the person who's designated as the secondary presenter, that's one of your jobs is to let people in from the waiting room. Uh, one thing to pay attention to when you're doing this, we ran into this a couple of times last year. There were some kids who registered with obviously fake names, like I think George Washington tried to come to the meeting last year. Um, and those are the kids who end up trying to cause chaos, uh, in the Zoom meetings. So if you see someone who's registered, who's in the waiting room and it's obviously a fake name, don't let them in the, don't let them in the room. Uh, just keep them out and they can re-register and get in if they want to, if they actually want to get in with their, with their real name. Uh, we've also turned off the private chat, so kids can't be sending things back and forth, um, during the meeting. You'll still be able to send messages to everybody, but the kids, the kids won't. We also turned off the ability to transfer files in the chat. Um, one thing we do want to share with the kids during the meetings are the links to the student notes. So you'll just share a Google link to those student notes. Um, you can still share links through chat, just not actual files. And, and again, I'll, in the email, the reminder emails I send you before each session, I'll have all those links spelled out for you. Here's the link to the, the Google slide deck, here's the link to the student notes. So those things will be sent directly to your email. So you've got them in one easy place to get. Uh, the sessions are set to automatically record. Just remember if you pause that before we start, to turn it back on when you do start. And really the, the only reason that we're recording them is if we have a kid who does something stupid, he says something stupid or writes something dumb on the screen or something like that. We try to track down who that person is. In the last like three years we've been doing this, there's been maybe two or three instances of that. Um, one of them, somebody had, um, paused the video and we didn't have any video of, it was really hard to track down who it was. So just remember to keep the video rolling. Um, just so we can track down folks who, uh, who caused problems. Um, the other, I think the other, um, settings are pretty straightforward. Only the host can share their screen, so kids can't screen share. I can't think of anything else there that would be odd. One thing that causes, uh, causes problems usually the first session is that some of our presenters, when they're trying to get in for the first time during the year, they try to log in from their own personal Zoom account. The first thing we need you to do before you try to go into Zoom is, is go to zoom.us and log out of your own account. And I'll give you their credentials to log into an A plus account. And I promise you that will cause you to have far less problems if you do that first. Go to zoom.us, log out of your own account and log in with their credentials that I'm about to share with you. Um, and again, this is to, this is to keep us from having problems and people going to the wrong room. Um, I know a lot of you guys know Ryan, Ryan Reardon. Um, last time he did this, I think twice in a row, he ended up in the wrong room. So he was in a room waiting on kids to show up and the kids are in another room. Um, in Zoom, there's what's called like the personal meeting room. And if you, if you try to get to the Zoom room through the Zoom account, and if you, if you're not real familiar with where to go, that's where you'll end up. So here's how I want you to log into the Zoom rooms. Um, go to zoom.us, log out of your Zoom account, log in with the A plus credentials that I'm gonna provide you. And then go back to the reminder email that I'm gonna send you and there'll be a link. It'll say Zoom link or something thereabouts. If you click on that link, it will take you to the right room every time, I promise. Um, so don't try to, don't try to go to meetings in Zoom and scroll through and find the right room. Cause there's a lot of, a lot of things going on on these accounts. Log into Zoom, go back to your email and just click on the link and it'll take you to the right place. Now, this is where you might run into issues. Actually, let me go to the next slide. So Zoom may ask you to, this is the new, new Zoom security feature. They, when you try to log into Zoom with our credentials, it may ask you to verify that you are who you say you are. Um, this started about a few weeks ago on Zoom. And to, the only way to verify the account is to go to the email associated with that Zoom account. Like I said, I think I will have this taken care of on the day of, so you'll never have to run into it. But just in case you do, if you try to log into our Zoom room, for example, one of our Zoom rooms is science room seven A at A plus ala.org. That's the Zoom username. And this is the Zoom password. So if you try to log in and it, and it tells you, you've got to verify your account, it's gonna send an email to the Gmail account associated with that Zoom room. Well, to keep this simple, the Gmail account is exactly the same username as Zoom room. So if you're, if you're going into Zoom room, science room seven A, that's your Zoom room, the Gmail account associated with that account is exactly the same. And the password's also the same to get into the Gmail account. Except notice that the Zoom password has a capital Z and the Gmail account has a lowercase z. If you have to do this, you'll just log into that Gmail account. There'll be an email from Zoom and there'll be a code in there. Um, that you will have to come back to Zoom and enter. And you can see that, that the box is for the code here. Um, let's, does that make sense? Like I said, I, I, the, the way, the only times that I've done this, um, typically it's only when an account hasn't been logged into in several weeks that it asks someone to do this. So the day of the meetings, I will log into all the accounts well before you guys need to get in, just to make sure it's not a problem. So you shouldn't run into this, but, but if you do, here are the directions and you can go into that Gmail account and you can get a code and go from there. The only other thing that I can think of that you possibly could run into that might be an issue is every now and then, Google will also ask you to verify who you are when you log into a new Google account. So, so if it does, if the Google, if you log into this science room seven A at A plus ala.org, your Google account and ask you to, it asks you to verify your Google account. Choose the option to confirm with your recovery phone number. And they're all set up with my phone number, which are listed on this, this, uh, presentation. So just put in my phone number and you'll be good to go. Can you guys see the phone number? I can't see it because of this. You can't see it?
No, I cannot see it.
Let me shrink it down. It's cut off at the bottom of the screen. Bear with me for a second.
We'll be able to see it when you share it with us though, so it'll be fine.
It's just cut, cut off here at the bottom.
Matt, I have a question. Um, we, we've been having to do all this Zoom, I mean, all this Google authentication. And what happens is the authentication goes to our phones. And if it goes to your phone, how are, are you gonna be monitoring the phone so that says, yes, it's me? Like if I sign into another computer at school, it sends something to my phone and I have to have my phone with me and, and say, yes, I'm signing in.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll have my phone on, on the handy. And I think, I think the way this one works, I think the way we have it set up, I won't have to do that. But when these sessions are going on, my phone will be right there with me. So if I need to do anything, I'll take care of it. Yes, ma'am. That won't be a problem. Alright, everybody okay with this though? And I, like I said, I don't think you'll ever see this, but just in case, I wanted you to know. Alright. So I already talked a little bit about registration. Uh, your kids will have to register exactly the way you did to get into this meeting. Um, remember that if it looks like they've got a, an inappropriate or a fake name, don't let them in, don't, don't, don't let them in from the waiting room. Um, because they're registering, I'll know what schools they're from, assuming they put in their real school name. When we first did these, um, maybe the beginning of last year, you guys had to take account of how many kids were from each school and report that to us. You don't have to do that anymore. The registration takes care of that. Um, one other thing about Zoom, we would like for everybody to have on their webcams, but we're not even gonna try to, try to, um, require that. So if they want to put on their webcam, that's fine. If they don't, they don't. Um, it just is what it is. Um, we have asked that teachers who are participating to turn on their cameras, but that's beyond y'all's job to try to make them do that. So I've asked them to, hopefully they will. Um, but it, as the presenter, I wouldn't even ask if, if I were you, just let that go and, and I'll deal with that myself. Alright, let's see. Um, one thing that you might want to do if you, if you, well, you just use Zoom, so it shouldn't be a problem. Zoom is requiring everybody to have a, an updated version of, of their software. Um, I don't remember how far back that update goes. But if it's been a while since you updated the, the Zoom software on your computer, you probably ought to do that before your first session. Uh, because it won't let you open up Zoom past a certain day. So if you want to update it, you just go to zoom.us/download and it'll take all of a couple of minutes, um, to update the newest version. Any questions so far before I, before I switch to something else? Alright, so Perdeck. I think Perdeck will be pretty straightforward for all of you. Most of you have experience using it. Nothing's changed with Perdeck that I'm aware of. I got through and tried out some of our presentations this morning. Everything looks the same as it did last year. Um, the one thing to remember is that the presentations in our folders are view only. So once you open up that presentation, you need to make a copy in your own Google Drive folder. So just open it up, go to file, make a copy. And then from there, then you can present from it, you can edit it, you can open Perdeck on it. Until you make a copy, it's not gonna work for you. So, open up our presentation, make your copy, then, um, you can turn on, um, turn on Perdeck. The directions for turning on Perdeck are here on the screen. If you've ever done that before, it's under add owns in Google Slides. Really easy to do. Um, and also remember that when you're using Perdeck, you know, you've got your regular button to turn on a Google Slide presentation. But there's also a button or Perdeck to present. You don't want to do the Google Slide presentation button. You want to hit the Perdeck button. Um, the start lesson button in Perdeck and that will activate the presentation. And if you do that right, it should take you immediately to this screen. And once you're here, this is what you want to have up on the screen as kids start getting in, uh, from the, from the waiting room. Um, and just as they're coming in, via chat, via audio, just tell them, hey, go to joinpd.com and put in the code that you see there on the screen. And that will get them logged into your Perdeck presentation.
And I'll just interject if I can, that, um, the, the first time I did this, I did it the day before I got in. I joined Perdeck on my own phone. And I was both the presenter and I was the attendee, just to make sure I knew what the kids were seeing and make sure I knew what was doing. So you can do it the day before, no one's gonna know.
That's good practice. And if you don't have an A plus Perdeck account, please shoot me an email and we'll get you one set up. Uh, we want you, uh, we want you to present from the A plus account. We ran into, I think it was Janet last year, who was trying to present from, uh, her school account. And it were, it was blocking kids who weren't on their school's domain out from the meeting. They couldn't join. Um, so make sure that you log out of your own Perdeck account and, and log into the, the one that we will provide for you. Um, and like I said, if you don't already have one, those of you who are new, shoot me an email and we'll set up a Perdeck. Get some options in Perdeck that are available. As you're going through a presentation, you do have an option on the toolbar at the bottom of the screen to show responses. It's a multiple choice question. That's just gonna tell you what percentage answered A, what percentage answered B and so forth. Um, if it's a more of a, a writing or a graphing kind of question, you can actually show the paragraph that you wrote or you can show a graph somebody drew. That's, that's all available if you want to do it. That's completely up to you. You also can lock the screen, um, so that kids can't, um, um, they can't continue to draw or, or write. You can lock out their answer essentially. Time's up. You can't do any more to your answer at this point, just to get them back on, on track. Um, this option causes presenters sometimes problems on the first time we do this as well. So when the, when the presentation's over, the session's over, we want you to send out to the kids what are called a Perdeck takeaway. And essentially what this is gonna do, Perdeck is automated. If you hit a couple of buttons, it's gonna send every kid who logged into the presentation, a copy of the presentation and all the work that they did during the presentation. But they wrote an essay, they answered the multiple choice questions, they drew a graph. All of that will be included in this Perdeck takeaway that's sent to that kid. So each one's personalized to each, to each student. Um, somebody is off mute, Gus.
That into my sub instructions. Here's our sound. Don't.
Can anybody tell who that is?
It's Robin.
It's Robin.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I didn't know. Thought it was me.
That's okay, you're good. Um, but anyway, so to, so to send the takeaways, that's the tricky part. Um, so I've got step by steps how to do that. Let me get here. So, to send out your takeaways. I've got a toolbar in my way. Let me get it moved there. First thing you're gonna do is you're gonna need to end your presentation. So once you're done with the session, there are three little, um, like little periods together, like an ellipsis kind of thing at the bottom of the screen. If you click on that, you'll get these options. And you want to choose end session. And once you choose to end the session, it's gonna prompt you for a name for the session. So just name it AP Biology Study Session One or something like that, whatever session number you're on. You click save and end session once you give it a name. And then you click, and it'll come to the screen next. And you click the button to generate takeaways. And as soon as you hit that button and confirm that you actually wanted to do that, it's gonna generate those takeaways for each student and send them out, um, personalized takeaways to every. So you're going, after you hit that button, it's gonna take you to this screen. And you're just gonna make sure that you hit publish takeaways for this session. Once you do that, um, Perdeck is gonna create in your Google Drive account, a Perdeck folder. It's gonna be under, um, well, first of all, these are gonna be sent to the students' account, Google Drive account as well. And they'll show up under shared with me. So if a kid was to ask you, hey, how do I find my Perdeck takeaway? Tell them to go to Google, Google Drive, look under shared with me. That's where it'll show up. But as the presenter, after you generate takeaways, it's gonna create copies of each of these Perdeck takeaways in your Google Drive account. Um, and what, what I need you to do is I need you to share that folder with me. Because what, what ultimately always happens, some of the school email folders block Perdeck from being able to send these messages to the kids. And a teacher always emails me and says, hey, my kids didn't get their takeaway and you send them to me. Unless you share your takeaway folder with me, I can't get to it because it's gonna be on your own personal Gmail account. So after the first session, the first session that you present, if you'll go to Google Drive, there's a folder in there that's gonna be generated called Perdeck and a subfolder called Takeaways. That's the folder I need you to share with me. Before you share it though, I want you to rename it because if, if everybody shares their folder and they're all named Takeaways, I'm not gonna know which one belongs to who until I open up every one of them. So my, if I'm looking for Paulette's, um, takeaways folder, I'm just gonna have to open up all the takeaways folders that I have until I find Paulette's. So before you share it, I'd like for you to rename that subfolder, just your name, Takeaways. Uh, and then share it with me. That way it'd be easy for me to track down, um, if I need to track down a specific kid's takeaway and send it. Does that make sense? Those of you that are new to this, um, have any questions for me on this? Yeah, question? Alright. Chime in if you have one. Alright, so again, I'm not gonna read this to you. You'll see this document in the, um, the study session folder that we're gonna look at here in a minute. It's a, um, a Word doc. But it just kind of lays out, here's what the primary presenter's supposed to do. And then the next document lays out what the secondary presenter's supposed to do. Um, just a couple of key things. We want both of you to log into the Zoom meeting about 20 minutes before the scheduled start time, start letting kids in. Um, the primary presenter, the main presenter for the session and runs the Perdeck. You know, this is virtual. Um, it's not the most fun thing to do, but do whatever you can to make it, um, sort of laid back and fun and welcoming. Um, as you're, as you're letting kids in from the waiting room, you might just give them some pointers on Perdeck. How do you Zoom, you know, if they want to ask a question or if they want to do a thumbs up, thumbs down. So before you start, you might just give them some, some pointers on the basics of Zoom and, and Perdeck as you go. Show them how to mute and unmute themselves, make sure they know how to do that. Um, tell them about the takeaways. Tell them, you know, after, after the presentation, you're gonna get this takeaway. It's gonna be in your Google Drive account, under shared with me and go from there. Notice in, in red here, if you have a kid who is disruptive at all, a kid who's putting something inappropriate in chat or mumbling or, you know, just, just being a nuisance or, or inappropriate, kick them out immediately. Don't, don't ask me to kick them out. Don't, you know, don't wait. Just kick them out of the room immediately. Um, and here's step by step how to do that. So you'll click on the participants list. You'll go mouse over the participant's name in that list. And you'll get a little more menu and in more, there's remove. Um, so don't hesitate to do that. If there's anybody who complains or there's any blowback from that, I'll take care of that. You don't need to worry about it. Just if you think somebody needs to be removed from the Zoom room, remove them, uh, and don't hesitate to do that. Um, we haven't run into this very much, but occasionally one of our presenters has internet problems and the other person has to take over. So just make sure that when you're, um, whoever you're partnered up with, that you guys know each other's phone number. So work that out beforehand and that if there's an emergency, you have, you have a backup plan, just in case. My phone number's also here. If you run into tech issues, don't try to email me, um, like the, the day of the session, like, you know, as it's starting, because I'm gonna be helping other people, just call me. Um, if you run into tech issues, um, and that way I won't miss it. Um, and I'll be able to get there and get it taken care of pretty fast. But we've been doing this now off and on for about three, so maybe the third year we've done it. So we worked out most of the kinks. And if we run into problems, we can fix them pretty fast. So just let me know, um, let me know if you have problems. Any questions on this, this slide? Alright, so we got a very similar slide for the secondary person. So the secondary presenter is mostly our logistics person in this process. Um, so the, the secondary person is letting people in from the waiting room, monitoring who's coming in, who's coming out. Um, several times during the presentation, I want you to ask if there are any teachers present. And if they are, I need you to note their name and their school name, their full name and their school name. There's a form that the secondary presenter is supposed to fill out after each session. and that form is linked up right here. And I'll also send that to you in the email reminder so that you don't forget. But one of the questions that's asked in that form is the names and schools of any teachers who participated. But there's a stipend associated for teachers who participate. And if they participate in all the sessions, they get a couple hundred dollars, so if they're there, we want to make sure that we have them credited. We also ask that you share the link to the student notes with the students in the chat. And if you haven't used Zoom much, let's say you've already shared all that out in chat, and then a kid logs in after you've done it. The kid can't see things in the chat that happened before they logged in. So you're going to need to repost the link to the student note several times during the presentation, just so that kids can see them. The same goes for the directions for getting into the Paradeck. So you want to put that in the chat, tell them to go to joinpd.com, use this code. You'll need to do that several times during the presentation, just to make sure that they know how to get in. You too, as the secondary presenter, can remove kids who are being unruly. Don't hesitate to do that, the same directions are here. Secondary person also, you know, feel free to chime in and help with the presentation. Just kind of work out with the primary person what they feel comfortable with you doing. Help to remind the primary person to send out the Paradeck takeaway at the end of the session. There's also a student survey at the end that we want you to share with the kids and have them fill out. That's linked up here, too. And I will send you that link in your email reminders as well, and remind you to do that. And then the other thing, and I think we've only had to do this once or twice, but the secondary person needs to be prepared to give the presentation just in case there's tech issues on the primary side. So if that happens, I'll probably be your secondary presenter, and you'll become the primary presenter if that's the case. We've, like I said, we've run into that a couple of times, but in most cases, we're able to fix the issues and move on. All right, any questions here?
You have to remind the primary presenter to make the secondary presenter a co-presenter.
Yeah, now, if you both log in with the with their credentials, you should automatically be marked, but sometimes Zoom doesn't work right on that, so just make sure before you start that you're both either a host or a co-host before the presentation starts.
OK.
All right, so these links, remember, these links will take you to all the materials that you need. And I'm going to go to these folders and kind of show you what's there momentarily. But before I do, I want to look at the last couple of things. So getting paid, that's important. So these are directions for how to get paid. The same directions are in the folder we're about to look at, so you won't have to come back to this presentation. But you'll go to Chrome River, you'll request payment, you need to do that within 30 days of the work. So what I would ask you to do, if you're teaching more than one session in a week, wait till the end of the week, and then request payment for both of the sessions. Don't forget to do it, because Jennifer's become more of a stickler for the rules. And if you wait longer than 30 days, she's going to give you a hard time about paying you, so make sure that you request payment within 30 days. Here's kind of the step by step directions for doing that. And again, these steps are in our folder that I'll show you here momentarily. All right, let's go ahead and go to one of those folders. So I'm going to go into, I'm just going to go into the Biology folder. All of them look the same, and they all have pretty much the same information in them. So notice up at the top, there's subfolders for each session. And the bars wasn't long enough for my naming description, so you may have to click on it to actually see the name of the folder. But for example, this is Study Session 1, Experimental Design and Stats. So in that subfolder, you've got the Google Slide deck, Paradeck, Presentation, and you've got copies of the student notes. This one happens to be in here as a PDF and a Word document. I think most of them only have the PDF. But every subfolder should look like this for every subject, regardless of which one you're teaching. Only exception is Physics C, and I want to talk to you Physics C folks before we leave today about that. In addition to all the Study Session materials for each session, down at the bottom are just general things you might need. So for example, right here is a copy of the presentation I just went through with you. So if you missed something, or you need to look back at something, that's the presentation that I just went through with you. Directions for Chrome River and Getting Paid, that document is linked up. There's a document, Primary Presenter Responsibilities, Secondary Presenter Responsibilities. Here's the student survey that you're sharing at the end of the presentation, and here's the Google form that you fill out at the end of the presentation. And then the only other thing is this right here, so this is the schedule. And this is where you go, and this is something I need you to do today or tomorrow. If you don't mind, is go in and verify that you have on your calendar the dates and times that I have in this schedule. For example, we've got Environmental Science pulled up right now. But notice there's tabs down at the bottom for all the science subjects. Here's Environmental Science, so Tuesday, October 25th, 4 o'clock, we've got Janet, the top person is the primary, and just underneath that, Brad is the secondary on the 25th, 4 o'clock. Thursday, the 27th, Matt is the primary, and Walt is the secondary. And notice that so far, and the reason some of you don't have any sessions scheduled so far, is I've only scheduled the first two weeks. And I did that on purpose, and here's why. You know, last year, we did these sessions on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday. This year, we're only offering them on Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday. And our number of students is a little bit higher this year than it was last year. So I'm a little concerned that on the first night, probably won't be on Tuesday, because Tuesday crowds are usually pretty thin on Tuesday, kids don't like that 4 o'clock session very much. But probably on Thursday, you may have some really big numbers. And it may be in some subjects, we have to go and add after that session to next rooms. You know, really, it doesn't matter, and the way our sessions are set up, it really doesn't matter if you're teaching 20 or 100. The way Paradeck works, it's not going to change how much work you're doing much. But if you get much over that, it's just going to even be hard to see who's on the screen and scroll through, though. So if the crowds are really big, we'll add some more rooms, and I may ask some of you to pick up some more sessions. But you can see right now, we have one Environmental Science room scheduled for each slide. That's it, and that's probably going to be plenty for Environmental Science. Our small there. For Biology, we have two rooms scheduled in each slide. Also notice that up at the top, here's your login credentials. So if you're in this first column, your Zoom login is always going to be scienceroom1a@apl.org, and the password is zoomroom1a. Note that the Zoom, capital, capital Z. And here's the link to your meeting. So you'll go to zoom.us, you'll log in with these credentials, and you'll either come back here, or the email that I will send you, and click on this link, and it will open up the correct room. If you're in the second column, scienceroom2a@apl.org, and your password is zoomroom2a, and there's your link. If you're interested, and you really don't need to know this, but if you scroll on down a bit, it will show you which schools are assigned to your room. And actually, it may just be teacher, it's teacher names, teacher emails. So you get an idea of whose kids are going to be in your room. And that's for that whole week. But again, that's not something you really would need to know. Questions on the setup here? Again, anything you should need should be in that folder. And if you don't already have that folder linked up in your Google Drive account, go to the third slide from the end of our presentation, which I will share with you in the chat here momentarily, and just open up the link, and it will take you into the correct folder. Let me go ahead and share that while I'm thinking about it. All right, so there's the link to the presentation, and from there, you should be able to access everything that you need. All right, so our first session started on the 25th, and we'll have sessions on Tuesday at 4:00, Thursday at 7:00, Saturday at 10:00. And like I said, I will send you at least two reminders, but while it's on your mind, if you will go into your folder and open up the schedule, this document, and just check and make sure that all the dates and times I have you listed for, you have on your calendar, make sure we agree on those so that we don't miss one. Anybody have questions for me? All right, most of you are old pros at this. Well, I think most of you'll be in good shape, if you're new and you think of questions, call me, or text me, or send me an email, either way, and I'll be glad to answer those for you, but thank you, guys, for doing this for us, we definitely couldn't do it without you. And we've had lots of lots of teachers and schools sign up for these sessions who aren't in our program. So that tells me they think they're worthwhile, so again, it wouldn't work without you guys doing it, so I appreciate all the hard work you do.